Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start tonight's regular meeting. Thank you for joining us. For the record, it is Tuesday, April 25th at 6:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Bird.
Here.
Item number two is the pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in pledge for our flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Larry Woodard with Cherry Lane Christian Church.
Been awhile.
Cherry Lane Christian Church.
Used to be.
It was, AKA Ten Mile Christian.
Right.
Please join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
Well, I first need to apologize for missing last month. I simply spaced it, and I apologize.
Withhold your pay.
I could pray twice as long tonight if you'd like. You'd make up for it.
That's alright.
That's alright, okay. Let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for wisdom as this council takes up the important city business. We are blessed to have good leaders in Meridian, and we thank you for their service. As I meet new people in our community each week, they're uniformly impressed with our city. The growth in population is amazing, and the only concern from new people is the increased traffic and as they try to become familiar with the city. As we approach 100,000 in population, we need to be asking ourselves, are we ready for the next 100,000? We've had a difficult winter, lots of snow and cold, now lots of rain. We thank these leaders for keeping ahead of the issues which affect our city in one of the toughest winters in recent history. I pray tonight for the children of our community. Our schools are full, and we will see even more this fall. May our activities in Meridian encourage young minds and healthy lifestyles. I pray tonight especially for our young men and women in the armed forces that serve around the world. Tonight I especially pray for the sailors, soldiers, airmen, and marines in the vicinity of Korea. I pray specifically for one young man that I know who today is flying drones over North Korea, and the tension he must be under as he observes activities north of the DMZ. Tonight our prayer is for our police and EMTs and firemen who must deal with sudden events that require their services. One such event that seems to be gaining is the impact of drugs filtering into our community from adjacent cities in the state of Oregon. Protect our police as they carry out their duties and keep them safe. Lastly, as our city leaders work on projects that will affect our community for years to come, may they continue to look to you for wisdom and guidance. So I pray tonight that our streets be wide and safe, the water run clear and cold, and I do all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Amen.
Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Under 5E, the resolution number is 17-02008. Under 7A, that application has been asked to be continued to May 16th, 2017. 8B, the resolution number is 17-2009. With that, I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes must be carried. Item five is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I stated earlier, 5E, the resolution number is 17-02008. With that, I move we approve the agenda as printed. Mayor to sign, the clerk to attest.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
All ayes must be carried. Under, there were no items moved from the consent agenda. Item 7A has been requested to continue to May 16th. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
I move we continue H-2017-0043 to May 16th, 2017.
Second.
Motion and a second to continue item 7A to May 16th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 8A, counsel, the strategic plan, you also have the resolution 17-2009. I will ask if you have questions or discussion.
Okay, I guess I'll, he's looking at me. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I was curious, I appreciate the sheet that was provided to us last week. When we first discussed this, I guess not when we first discussed this this year, but our previous council meeting on this subject, there was a document that was shared with council members that had numerous edits and questions, and I think Councilman Mylum, in her infinite wisdom, made the suggestion that we wait to take action to give department directors and staff an opportunity to provide feedback. And I'm just curious when we're going to receive that feedback.
The feedback on what? I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'll repeat my question. In our previous meeting, we, I brought a spreadsheet that had numerous edits and questions related to a wide variety of strategic action items that were on the plan for discussion amongst the council, and Councilman Mylum suggested that we gauge feedback. Because those questions impacted specific department directors, staff, as well as individuals that were in charge of each action item, that we withhold voting on that plan until we had the opportunity to receive feedback from those individuals. To date, we haven't received that feedback, and I'm not comfortable with making any decision until we've received that information. So the question was, when we would be able to expect that response?
The meeting was continued, and that discussion came up two weeks ago, which is when we asked to put this off two more weeks because Mr. Palmer wouldn't be here last week. The plan that was brought back was removing the objectives, which is really the conversation I'm having with the department directors as the operational side. What we were seeking direction on is really the 100,000, 50,000, 20,000 foot level of the vision and the strategic goals. As policymakers, we were seeking your feedback in terms of, are we in line of the vision of this council? And then we have direction from this council and that we can start firming up our objectives and the tactics that support the direction and vision of this council. So you brought some very good items to the table in saying, those really are operational, and those conversations need to be had with myself and the directors in checking their relationship to the vision, the focus areas, and the strategic goals. And the other piece to that discussion was, an annual check-in was not off enough. So we're bringing it back saying, a semi-annual check-in would be preferred over the annual. And with each of our departments bringing, during their strategic plan update that they come and give once a year, that they would be bringing some of the areas that they are the leads in that support the strategic goals and focus areas and vision, and that you would be getting those once a month. What we're trying to put together is a consistent delivery for that section of the conversation they want to have with council on how that should look so that you know you're in the strategic plan piece to it.
Just for clarification, then, it's the intent that we won't receive the feedback to the document that was provided before you're looking for a vote tonight?
We're looking for the direction on the policy level of visions, strategic focus areas, and goals. And yes, I would be more than happy to sit down and go through the objectives and what your concern is. But as I mentioned two weeks ago, Mr. Cavanagh, there's 100 different ways of getting to where this council wants the city to go. What we need to all agree on is where we're going, and then the professionals that we hire need to help get us there. And that's what we want to come and report back on.
Madam Mayor, to respond to that, I don't disagree, I don't think any of us disagree. I think the challenge has been this bouncing ball that has changed, and it's changed a lot over the past 18 months. It's shocking to hear that it's taken 18 months to firm up strategic goals and objectives when we've already voted on those multiple times. Quite frankly, I also grow frustrated, the more that we talk about this plan, that council is being told what is and isn't their purview. I don't think there's anyone here that wants to get into the operations, but when the councils ask for their feedback and perspective on this goal, on these goals, and we provide them, and we ask for questions and responses, and we don't receive them multiple times, it makes it very challenging for me as an individual to be supportive of this plan. Because quite frankly, I don't have a lot of comfort in knowing that six months from now, when this comes back to us and I have questions, that those questions are going to be answered, or addressed. Because there's been multiple occasions where that hasn't happened. And I feel that we have asked for some very simple feedback from those on-the-ground people because we've been asked for our feedback, and we haven't received it.
Mr. Cavanagh, I understand your frustration, but those are areas that I'm responsible for, frankly, and I would love to sit down with you one-on-one. In fact, you did take, I think all of us by surprise, when you came with the document, and it did initiate some discussions. And I think those discussions, because they are operational in nature, that falls under my responsibility. And if you're frustrated, be frustrated with me.
I am.
And we can certainly talk about that.
Well, Madam-
I've talked to many other communities on their strategic planning, and it's a year out when you adopted the official document, and we came back with our annual update. There are still communities that are three years into it that have tried operationally to figure out the best reporting, their performance measures, what really was achievable and what wasn't. And then until you start working that plan, and I think that's what our directors stood in front of you, until they started to implement that, looked at, because that whole year was developing tactics. And even those tactics, looking at them and seeing how they related to the objectives, that's where you start making sense of, does this objective make sense or not? Is it in the right order or not? And does it really support the high-level vision that the policymakers and the elected officials are envisioning? And those are still conversations we've had, and I can tell you whether it's other cities, other corporations, it's a living document. We wanted to ensure that this council knows that it wasn't just a document that sat on a shelf, that there were changes. And there were questions that were a result of starting to put the tactics together and starting to work the plan that made it obvious that verbatim, that what you adopted over a year ago was not necessarily realistic. Some of them had been accomplished, some of them were vague, and needed more detail in that. And those are the conversations that certainly the directors or the lead and I are having in terms of the accountability to the plan. But I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and talk operationally, what all that is, and to answer the questions that you raised. Because I think the raising of those questions really did make us take note and say, how deep down does the conversation need to be at the policy level? So I'm sorry you're frustrated with me, but I would be more than happy to set up a meeting with you following this, and we can go through your concerns. But I will say, there is not one director in this city that is not taking that plan serious and rolling up their sleeves and working it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, when I ran for the position, I felt like I wasn't running for an oversight committee to look down from 20,000, 30,000 feet to set what looks to me like a bullet point admission statement. I ran because I felt like I was running for a position as a policymaking council where we do get into the weeds a little bit. We get into the objectives, we get into the things beyond the feel-good statements that are on, you know, this one-page version of the plan. And so while Councilman Cavanagh's, I guess amended version that he had presented to us, there was a few things I would have tweaked. I feel like it presented us a lot better view as to what each of, you know, of the objective, or I guess each of the goals bullet pointed here, the next steps to make those things happen. Whereas this, we're saying, yeah, these things are all great, now go forth and I hope you do them. I want to know how that's going to happen and how I can help set the policy to make that possible and facilitate the different departments being able to accomplish those goals. So I have a hard time with this, it just doesn't feel like it, just, again, just, you know, feel-good mission statement rather than what we actually want to be accomplished over the next several years.
Well, I hope during the annual strategic updates that the departments bring you, it will bring some of those areas that they're leading that will support the focus areas and the strategic goals. That is where they're seeking your feedback, but there is a clear separation between the mayor and the council responsibilities. And our departments cannot have seven bosses. So I do take serious my role in the operations and the day-to-day business of this city. You set the policy and you set the budgets, and when you do that, then it's my responsibility to make sure that they're executed. Not one place in the state code does it suggest that our department should have seven different bosses. That's really complicated, and I should be the responsible party to the strategic plan and bringing back the progress to it. And I, as I think Councilman Borton suggested, annually, we need to see that on a more frequent basis, and quarterly seems to, or not quarterly, oh my god, semi-annually, not biannually, because you don't want it every two years. It seems to be a good pace as well. You'll hear it monthly in strategic updates as it pertains to individual departments.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Maybe then as an example, just picking one on here, 2C says promote and promote a diverse and sustainable economy. I feel like council can be more of an asset to figuring out how to make that happen than saying, go do that, let us know in a year how it's going, and then we'll check in again the next year. I want to be involved in saying, okay, how can we make this happen? What are the objectives to make this happen? And then go forth with the tact, figuring out the tactics to accomplish the objectives that promote a diverse and sustainable economy, not just go do that and let us know how it's going. It's too broad.
Well, I would imagine that during the semi-annual update, you'll hear the activities that are going on to support those, and that is where the conversation is really beneficial to say, well, are you doing these things? We would like to see something here, and definitely we can bring information back. That's where the conversation is very beneficial. Yes, Ms. Low Roberts.
Knowing that it must have been quite a process to go through what we end up with at first and voted in basically the book, all the way down to a sheet, would it be possible to take, like, one of our workshops and have you lead us through that? Not that we have to have all the department heads in, but take us through kind of the process and the changes that have happened in drilling it down?
Well, so Councilman Borton and I talked about maybe when those semi-annual updates could coincide in terms of, at the beginning of a new budget year and right before budget workshops, so October and March. I think as I work to bring your update back in October, that will be a good time to really see, again, what I mentioned before is, we're trying to put kind of some format of what those semi-annual updates can look like that's going to give you enough meat that you feel that you can dive in and we can have a productive conversation. So yeah, I could do it during a workshop, and maybe we can see how we can best work through that. And I'll work with the council president and vice president to see what kind of structure we can put to that so we can have those kind of meteor discussions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
During one of our presentations, it was shared about a computer portal that is managing the goals. It was my hope that we would have been able to have seen that by tonight. Can you give us a status update onto the progress? And at the last meeting, it was shared that council would be able to log into that, be provided with an online portal, since now none of us are in City Hall full-time. Haven't heard anything about it since then. In light of, I think, some significant changes into the document that we now have before us versus what we had, I'd like to have an update as to, will we have access to that? When should we expect to have access if, and what will we be able to see?
We are working on what that portal would give and at what level of reporting. It's kind of, at that time, we even said, we don't know how to show the percentage completed, because now it will have several different influencers to the objectives and that sort of thing. Certainly, that tool has become extremely important in my one-on-ones with the departments and the leads on those objectives, and where they're at, and where they're going to need policy discussions or budgetary impacts and those kind of things. So I don't know what that tool will look like. Those are still conversations that we're having. It is a tool that, for the operational piece, it's essential in having discussions and greater accountability with the directors. Mr. Palmer.
He asked the exact question, I just had unmuted my mic to deal, but further on to that point, I mean, I got to kind of see its creation in meetings, when I would meet with Ms. Holman, and even contributed to a functionality that exists within it. A functionality that was important to me as a councilman to be able to see everything and ask questions within the system that then would have an answer in it, that if anybody else were to happen upon that particular objective or tactic or goal of whatever, that they would be able to see the answers, that there was a question, that there was an answer, so as to avoid, you know, one person having a question, another person later, and it just being an email chain, it being there, and also subject to public record requests if, case somebody was interested in how a particular piece of the strategic plan is progressing. And so for me, I absolutely want access to it, because I'd like to be able to participate and see, I understand I'm the seven boss issue, but certainly to be able to watch progress and have a good understanding of things that are taking place, because when we get to the budget setting process, the more information, the better throughout the rest of the year on how things are going.
We will bring that back.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Councilmember Palmer touched on something that at least made my ears perk up, and I want to make sure that I'm clear on. Is it contemplated that council would be prohibited from seeing all the information available?
No.
Okay. Hence, why my, Mr. Bird, why my ears perked up, is if that was contemplated, I think that's something that we would need to discuss here tonight, because I don't think that's something-
I don't know how to get into it.
Well, just because-
That'd be me.
That'd be me.
Other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Now that I'm unmuted. Here's my take on it, for what it's worth. I saw the spreadsheet that Councilman Kavner provided to be illustrative of some disconnect between legislative and executive branch, and a lot of proposed amendments and questions in it, but something else that was apparent, and from 2015 to 2016 through this, the various levels of this plan, starting at the highest level with the five focus areas, we're all on the same page on those. And the goals that were listed under each of the five focus areas, we all still seem to be on the same page and rowing in the same direction. And at least when I looked at the summary sheet with regards to those two levels, there wasn't any requested changes. And I see that's what you've summarized in, not an adoption, but sort of a reaffirmation of the strategic plan, at least on those two levels. The discussion which hasn't happened, which I think is a good one and which will continue to happen in perpetuity, is the objectives. And what I saw what Councilman Kavner did here is made reference on the objective level to a multitude of objectives that either were marked as arbitrary, or there's no progress or no known progress, maybe some more information could be provided on them. But I saw that as, from the objective level, and to back up a little bit, when reviewing the resolution that we all have, and I double-checked with CJ now, that we all have before us, whether it goes forward today or in a future day, speaks to the objectives and even the tactics as being the most dynamic part of the plan and changing. And there'll be objectives, I imagine, under each of the goals that changes. They change month to month, certainly semi-annually when we get reports as to each goal that we all have within each focus area. There are some, and there quite frankly, could be some that could be removed now. And I think Councilman Kavner's, and Madam Mayor, you've noted it, that there may be some that were not intentionally arbitrary, but might have evolved and become discovered to be such, and that objective would be removed, or maybe not a critical mission for the city. But I didn't take what you're proposing to be to the exclusion of objectives. And the reference in the resolution still speaks to objectives and still speaks to the mayor's responsibility, at least semi-annually, to come before the council and speak to these and identify those objectives that were at least, including now, some which are being removed, propose some new ones, have feedback, engagement from council. Here's additional objectives under those goals that we should consider and perhaps all support and adopt and include. And that's the dynamic feature of the plan. So I, maybe I'm just two glasses half-full. I saw this, I didn't see these two to be diametrically opposed. I thought they were consistent with each other, and I took Councilman Kavner's proposal just to bluntly address the objective discussion. So if we adopted this, I'm all for it, because what I expect is, this is the same as we've had the last couple of years, and the executive branch has their feet to the fire, and you've committed to that on a semi-annual basis, to come forward and speak to focus area one, here's the objectives, and here's what our departments have accomplished. Here's what we've not, we've failed on, we haven't accomplished this. This objective doesn't fit, let's take that out. Council, what do you think we should add in as a new objective? And we can have, not even just semi-annually, but maybe have more dynamic input, having these objectives evolve, and then be able, with Ms. Holman and the portal, to be able to track progress. I hear everyone talking the same way in that regard. So to adopt and act on this doesn't negate, I don't think, what Councilman Kavner's presented. I think the dialogue that you two have both are eager to have now is great. We don't have to wait every six months to have that report. And quite frankly, Madam Mayor, I think that helps you too. So there's nothing, no one's hiding the ball or any perception of such. When you get to that six-month review, that if there's additional objectives that should come in, let's talk about it early and often. And if there's problems, and this brought to light concerns with several of them, let's address it too.
Well, and I would hope that you address it with me.
Certainly.
Because that's, I'm the owner of that plan, and when you have questions, they should go through me as the responsible party. So I think we're all saying the same thing, and when I report back, those are the areas that we'll be touching on. But as far as the directional, the visionary piece, the focus areas and the strategic goals are really what we're working and developing a plan to and executing towards. And that's what we'll be bringing back monthly in the strategic updates, and they'll be talking about the objectives that they're working on and that they're leads to, and any issues they have in that area. And collectively, it will be brought back twice a year to discuss progress as a whole, because as you can see in that strategic plan, that there's a lot of owners in almost every single one of the focus areas. So it's all hands on deck and everyone owns a piece to that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
It may be quicker that we hear feedback after conversation with Councilman Kavner about some of the objectives, and I don't see, I see us being involved and aware of the objectives and their development and promotion is not so much getting in the weeds to Councilman Kavner's, or Councilman Palmer's comments. I think that's appropriate, knowing the objectives. It's, you know, going further and now within individual departments directing day-to-day affairs, that's not the intent of an objective or any member of council. But I think the involvement with the objectives is appropriate. And I don't, and again, I don't see what you're presenting as an attempt to exclude that. Objectives are always going to be a critical part of it, and then we can all have an opportunity to view the progress on them. That's how I saw it.
And Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
The comment with regards to the reporting time, and I don't know, council, if they've got other suggestions, certainly present them, but the semi-annual, the somewhat arbitrary dates of October and March, the idea that I thought was, March is a good status report as you prepare your budget, and then October is a good status report, now that the executive branch understands for better for worse what budget's been approved, what tools there are to execute the strategic plan going forward. So somewhere within those two months seem to be appropriate. And it also holds the executive branch's feet to the fire, so to speak, on a month certain when those reports shall occur. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
I have the document up here on the screen, and I can add that in if that's the council's desire. I just added a section two, if you were looking at the resolution, on the bottom, that said the mayor will report progress toward the objectives to the city council semi-annually in the months of March and October. Is that?
I think I'll be presenting a semi-annual report on the plan.
Say it now. They don't say it now.
No, I'm adding, I'm adding that in if that's the council's desire, and then we can, I can go print it, and you can approve that.
We can bring it back next week.
Okay.
So would bring it back next week with the changes as noted?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further on this? Okay, item 8C is under our legal department. Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If you look in your packets, and I did previously send it to you as well, we've created some guidelines for the open forum that we've been discussing, having, get to the right page, there we go. So in looking at the code and looking at the law, we came up with essentially four guidelines that would be part of our agenda, so it would be clear to folks what the rules are in this. They're pretty straightforward. Again, it's just sign your name, tell us what you want to talk about. Again, we're not going to have individual complaints about anybody, that's really not the purpose. Again, testimony about things that are active and pending, we can't have that. And then, of course, if there's anything inappropriate or stuff like that, the chair obviously can stop the discussion and end it. We talked about when to have this in the meeting, and speaking with the mayor, the, we had been talking about doing it at the beginning of the meeting, and one of the concerns is that, again, on any given week, there might be nobody here and there might be 10 people here, and I don't know what it's going to be. So the thought was maybe initially, we do it on the second Tuesday, which is your normal workshop, and we put it at the end of the workshop, which puts it at about a 5:00, 5:30-ish time, which can work for some people, I think. You know, if you do it too early, if you did it at 3:00, somebody probably would complain they can't get here. Put it at the end of the workshop, that's one. If we do it on the fourth Tuesday, again, I would suggest putting it at the end, because you always have land use hearings, and of course, people have paid for that hearing to occur by all the noticing and everything. And again, I don't know if there's one person here or 10, and we said 30 minutes, we wanted to try to at least put some limitation on how long this would be. And certainly on those nights when there's, you know, if there is people here that you know of, we look at the list, and there's a lot of people that are signed up, you know, you can always move it around in your agenda, but at least if you put it as you planned at the end of the meeting, then people would know that's when you do it, if that would make sense. But that was just a suggestion. But if you're okay with these guidelines, I think the only question would be is, do you want to go ahead and add that, and when do you want to add it? Do you want to add it with the first workshop in May?
Okay, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I would think if we're going to not have it at every meeting, that the workshop meeting be the one that we don't have it at, and have it right after the adoption of the agenda or the, right after the consent agenda, because, I mean, to have somebody wait to have their three minutes for four hours, I think is, sure, if we have 10, we're going to have people who are going to take an hour or two for their item, might have to wait 30 minutes. But I think as, at least as a trial, that we do it and see how it goes, and if it gets to where it's just, we're getting 10 every single week, then maybe look at moving it around on the agenda. But if it's not a problem, if we only have zero, one, or two, you know, people who are going to take an hour for their item can wait three to six minutes unless it gets out of hand. That way, it's early enough in the evening, but after most people's work hour, that I think it would give us a good trial and see what happens.
Ms. Mylum.
I agree with Councilman Palmer, and I think that because this is something new that we're adding, we can, it's mobile, we can change it, and let's try it at the beginning. If it's not working, if it's putting things off, if it's creating problems for our meetings and the people who are paying for items on the agenda, then we move it to the end. But like you said, there may only be one or two, and we shouldn't make them wait till the end of the agenda just to have their three minutes of, say.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Question to Councilman Palmer and Genesis. If you're running a business and a customer's coming in to buy, do you wait on them first or the one that's looking? And that's the way I look at this thing, is these applications that come for us, these people are paying a pretty good penny to be heard, and we're allowing these other people to come in and voice, and I have no problem with it at all. I've been letting them come and talk, but I think, I think we take care of the business at hand first, and then take care of the public forum afterwards.
Madam Mayor.
Counsel, I guess when Councilman Bird and I talked about it at the agenda-setting meeting, it was, it was, there's sometimes citizens here that are here for those public hearings, and they've already invested their time in the neighborhood meetings, they've invested their time in planning and zoning, and they're here because there's a particular application that is on the agenda that we need to get to their hearings for. And that was more the discussion. It's not necessarily the applicants, but we have ACHD here, we have a lot of people here to give comment or to have us available for questions for those public hearings, and that was more what the discussion was centered around. So I don't want you to think just because they paid an application fee, that gives them a greater voice, but it's citizens that come in a response to that. That we, that's how we came up with the recommendation.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mylum.
And because you brought me into this, Councilman Bird, every one of our citizens and constituents are just as valuable customers to me as any others. So does it need to be in a specific place on the agenda? I mean, you have agenda-setting meetings every week, so maybe base it on what is on the agenda. Agenda goes out so people can look at it ahead of time and have some idea when to come in. I agree that we certainly don't want a room of 300 people, and then all of a sudden, there were three people here that were here to speak, and now you have 300 people that may, and then it really could extend that out, though we have a cap at 30 minutes, I guess, anyway. It's tough, I have mixed feelings about it, because we don't know what to expect, and then that's why, like, for the first time, put it on an agenda where we don't have a huge, a huge, long action items, and put it at the beginning of the agenda and see what happens. I don't know.
Again, it was, even if it's once a month, we have coffee with the mayor, we have the town hall meetings, you have the online comments, you have a lot. Our city, if you look at other ways of approaching your elected officials, have great accessibility. We're trying to find something that's predictable, and as we get calls or you get calls, you can direct them. At the second and fourth meeting, we have these open comments. On the second meeting, it's closer to 5:00. In the fourth meeting, it's, it depends on the agenda. And, but there's also other ways they can get on the agenda. If they want to write the letter and say, "I'd like to come in and address the council on this policy, because I think that we should have a leash law for cats," we can specifically put that, and we can have that, we can schedule it on the agenda for that. I can't wait to see our police and what their testimony's going to be on enforcement. But I guess we're trying to add this, see how it goes, but we do have many forums that they have to have a dialogue with their elected officials. This won't be the only way.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Further proposed strategic plan on 3A says elevate the engagement of the community with the local government. We do have massive opportunities to.
We do have massive opportunities to communicate with this, but being, building this into the plan means it's not enough. So I think to elevate it, that this is a good opportunity for a trial, to do it for a month, see what happens. If we've got developers complaining that, I've got 30 minutes of people getting up, yapping about whatever they want, while I'm here, you know, paying my staff to be here about this project, and all these neighbors getting grumpy because they've been sitting around an extra half an hour trying to get to my item, then yeah, we figure something else out. But until we know that it's going to cause a problem, I think it's worth it. Worth trying it. Throw it in the beginning of the meeting, if we get nobody, or one, or two, then it's not a problem. No developer is going to complain about three to six minutes delay in their thing because somebody got up to say something.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I appreciate your point, Madam Mayor, about predictability. I think that's important, and having, trying to show up nebulous on each agenda based on the meeting, I don't think is maybe our best practice. So I'd support a consistent time. If that means that we're doing it in the first, third, and fourth, which are kind of our traditional city council meetings at the beginning, I think that may be an appropriate decision. If it turns out that this is a much more popular addition to our council agendas than we anticipated, perhaps then we have the discussion about adding it at the workshop. We have community presentations in our meetings, announcements, proclamations recognizing state championship football, basketball teams, that sometimes take 30 to 40 minutes for us to go through that presentation. I don't think that giving our citizens three minutes to share what is ever on their heart is going to get in the way of some of the regular business practices of the city. Councilmember Palmer's comment, which I also agree with, should the development community voice some concerns that it is impacting their bottom line, then perhaps we have a further discussion about it. But the citizen trial, I believe beginning in at the first part of each of our regular scheduled meetings seems to me to be the appropriate decision. That's one I would support.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We're arguing about the impact of something that hasn't yet to occur, which is just kind of fascinating. There's no wrong answers when you do that.
I don't know if anyone's arguing.
As far as the impact of a yet-to-have-occurred event?
I don't really even care.
So, maybe everyone's in agreement.
It's interesting that every fifth Tuesday has turned into every single week, you know, and that's not enough. So I don't care. This was just a proposal that Mr. Nary put together. You guys come to an agreement, and that is what we'll do. So.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Every fifth Tuesday, everybody? No, I'm just kidding. Then does anybody object to trying it for this? Do we need a motion for that, or just make it so?
Yes, you need a motion.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, answer your question. It would be easier for us if you folks made a motion, so we knew when you want to start it. The guidelines, I would like that you adopt the guidelines, and then you tell us when you want to start it, and then we'll do it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move, we adopt this plan that Mr. Nary has written up for us, and do it on the first, third, and fourth Tuesday of each month, starting in May. And put it at the beginning, put it, unless anyone has a better idea, after consent agenda.
Maker of the motion's finished, I'll second that.
So I have a motion in a second. If you could delay that, so we can at least let people know. I mean-
And I thought about that, but then if nobody shows up in May, then we move on.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Burton, yes.
For discussion, I would propose, if the motion maker's okay, to do it in front of the consent agenda, if it is to be a consistent item, we adopt the agenda, there may be a proclamation, it's kind of community time, but a consent agenda might have an item that gets pulled off of it and then discussed, and could be consistent timing, so, before the consent.
So after adoption of the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burd?
Aye.
All ayes.
Let's go for it.
Future meeting topics, a couple of upcoming events. Town hall meeting is on Wednesday. We've gotten a couple of questions already in advance, and it'll be livestreamed, we'll be taking tweets that are questions and integrating them into the town hall meeting as well. It starts at 6:30 at Coal Valley High School. Growing Together Roundtable is Thursday from 9:00 to 11:30 at the Small Business Development Center in Nampa. Deputy Chief Palmer is having his goodbye party on Thursday, April 27th, from 1:00 to 2:00. And we have an Arbor Day celebration on Friday, April 28th, at Hunter Elementary at 1:30, and a number of walking clubs. Wednesday at Hillsdale from noon to 1:00. Chief Joseph on Thursday from 12:15 to 1:00. Compass from 1:10 to 1:30, also on Thursday. And Willow Creek, also on Thursday from 10:10 to 10:30. So those are the upcoming events. Anything for future agendas? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Make sure everybody's at the thing tomorrow.
What's tomorrow?
Town hall.
Town hall.